I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. Ms. Nichols, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. Ms. Adams, could you please call, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to do the invocation, please, first? So if everyone could please stand.
Good afternoon, I'm Rabbi Emily Alana Lasben Ashrov of Temple of Israel here in Wilmington, North Carolina, and I'm honored to offer the invocation. May all of our board members be endowed with wisdom, patience, and courage. May you all be able to make the necessary decisions to ensure a wonderful education for every single student and a safe and healthy and fair work environment for every teacher, employee, and staff member. May you always work together for the betterment of our school system in our entire community, and may you be blessed in this very important and holy work for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rabbi, for that. If we could also take a moment for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right, you may be seated. Ms. Adams, could you please call the roll?
Stephanie Adams.
Here.
David Wortman.
Here.
Nelson Bollier.
Here.
Lisa Eastep.
Here.
Judy Justice.
Here.
Jeanette Nichols.
Here.
Bill Rivenbark.
Here.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or any discussion?
But, Chair, one change. I would like to request that Item Number 7, Section A, COVID-19 Update, be moved up before recognition of achievement.
All right, any discussion about that change of item?
Yeah, I would say that if you're going to move Sections 7A, I think it's probably important to also move some of the other things because they directly relate to the update, including, I think, B, C, and D, especially D, because I know there's a lot of talk in the community about that, so I would ask, if we're going to move that, let's move at least Section D up as well.
Since this is discussion, why don't we leave it as it is? This could go on for a while, and I'm not sure what's going on with the recognition situation as far as people attending or not.
The recognition is probably going to take a while, and I think the call to the audience can take a while, and I don't want to keep Dr. Brown here too late. I think it's also important that we front-load the most important pieces of the agenda while the community's watching.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, are we going to move the entire, is the intent to move the entire or just Section A? Because again, I think Nelson put it best, we need to make sure that we're talking about the stuff the community's talking about at the same time, so we don't parcel it out. If we leave it fine, if we move it, let's move it all.
All right, so the recommendation-
In that case, though, why don't we leave it as it is? Because the recognition and the call to the audience can't be that long, because, wow, this could go, this could take quite some time.
It is connected. I understand what they're saying.
Well, could we move the recognition below that?
You mean leave call to the audience as is and move the recognition after the Item 7 with all of its parts?
Yes.
That's fine.
Yes.
Is that okay? All right, would somebody like to make a motion?
Move to reorganize call to the audience, drop that from Number 6 to Number 7, and move information up from Number 7 to Number 6.
All right.
I think, I think it was also the recognition.
It was not called to the audience, it was recognition.
It was recognition. Yeah, so is the motion to move the recognition?
The motion is to move call to the audience to 5, move information up to 6, and move recognition of achievement to Number 7. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All right.
Stephanie Adams.
I.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Bollier.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Agenda has been edited. All right, Item 3 is a closed session. This evening is pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143-318.1A, 1A, 3, and A6 to consider personnel matters and to maintain the confidentiality and personnel records under North Carolina General Statutes 115C-319 and -321. To consult with the Board's attorney to preserve attorney-client privileged information, including the case of Whitaker v. New Hanover County Board of Education, IC #19-034762, and to maintain the confidentiality of student records under the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G. Do I hear a motion?
Move closed session pursuant to the statutes. Mr. Bollier.
All right, is there a second?
Second. Lisa Eastep.
Any discussion? Ms. Adams.
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
Nelson Bollier.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Judy Justice. Ms. Justice.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark.
Aye.
Thank you, we are in closed session. Well, we will move right along. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Are we able to do these as one, or do we have to go individually? Ms. Stagner.
You can certainly review them all and take them as one motion unless there are any changes or someone wants to pull it out.
All right. There are motion regarding the approval of the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes. Mr. Bollier.
All of them?
All of the minutes.
All right, August 11th, September 1st, September 11th, and September 18th from 2020. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, thank you. Ms. Adams.
Stephanie Adams.
Aye.
David Wortman.
Aye.
Nelson Bollier.
Aye.
Judy Justice.
Aye.
Lisa Eastep.
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols.
Aye.
Bill Rivenbark.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that we have call to the audience next, and then we are going to information. Is that correct? That's what we approved, right?
Yes.
All right, so if we could go to call of the audience, please. And, Ms. Adams, I'm going to turn on to you because I believe we have some in-person as well as some call-ins this evening.
We do. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. However, time does not permit dialogue between the Board and the community. While the Board welcomes residents to share their views, the Board Chair retains the right of limited discussion on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. The first person to speak is Peter Ralich.
I've written something for the current Board, for our newly-elected Board, and for the parents and community members that I know are watching everything you do. How do we know you're listening? How do we know you care? How do we know what's on your mind when you just sit and stare? With better communication and real transparency, you'll earn our trust. Earn our trust. Take care of our teachers, protect our children too. We don't like the rumor mill, just give us the truth. Report new COVID cases by the end of every day, and you'll earn our trust. Earn our trust. We know you're not indifferent or prone to natchalots. But when we write email or call, we'd like a prompt response. Some here were elected, some of you were hired, some are well-respected, while others have been fired. Know that we're all watching everything you do to earn our trust. Earn our trust. You've got to earn our trust.
Francesca Vernon.
Name is Francesca Vernon, and I'm a resident of New Hanover County. My daughter is a third grader at Ogden Elementary. I want to acknowledge and thank her amazing teachers and staff for all of the hard work they are putting in every day. Her teachers have done an excellent job teaching and engaging children while also keeping families informed. I am calling today to voice my concerns on the public record regarding some of New Hanover County Schools' policies for managing COVID. I have sent messages to this Board that have gone unanswered. Thank you to Eddie Anderson, Dr. LaShawn Smith, and Kristin Jackson for speaking with me in the last few weeks. I understand that the logistics of safely teaching children during a pandemic are complicated. As of Monday morning, COVID positives in New Hanover County have risen to 6.2%, and North Carolina recently reported the highest daily total ever. I would like the Board to be aware that minimum social distancing of six feet, per CDC recommendation, is not being met in many of the classrooms as of last week. If the principal had not offered a picture of my daughter's classroom, I never would have known that desks were actually four feet apart. Mr. Anderson and I talked about the fact that schools have been measuring six feet from center of chair to center of chair. If you know children, you understand they are moving targets. This puts many of them within six feet of each other for more than 15 minutes per 24-hour period. When I spoke with Mr. Anderson, he assured me he would follow up on this and attempt to move desks even further away when possible, and I hope this has been done. I'm not sure that I would be appropriately notified if there was a positive case in my child's classroom. Even after talking with several administration folks, I'm still not sure what the actual policy is regarding notifying possible exposures in a class or school. If the children are not actually six feet apart, many more parents and staff need to be notified when there is a positive case in the classroom. I would also like to voice my concern regarding the spreadsheet that New Hanover County Schools have provided. It would be much more reassuring to know that it is being updated more than once a week on Fridays. In general, as a parent, I would like New Hanover County Schools to be much more transparent about updating families regarding positives in our schools. I would like to know that a clear written plan for handling positive and suspected cases as well as quarantine protocol is being followed by all schools. I would like to be sure that implementation of proven safety measures is happening in each school. In closing, thank you again to the dedicated staff and teachers. I want my child in school. For the sake of our children, teachers, and staff, please let us do it safely.
Hi, my-
Sandy Isles.
Sandy Isles, and as you know, I'm a parent of two children in New Hanover County Schools. Tonight, I want to talk about trust. New Hanover County has a problem, has a trust problem, and we have a community who is afraid. Your teachers are afraid, your parents are afraid, and your students are afraid. As a parent, I'm being told to be patient. I'm hearing the Board and District feel attacked, yet our county has told parents, "We cannot and should not trust you." Ms. Adams, you mentioned to me that the Board has been through trauma because of these past couple years, but you failed to recognize the community has been through trauma. Respectfully, this is not about how the Board members feel. You're not the victims. Every single family in New Hanover County Schools is the victims. In February, we were told once again that the District cares more about protecting themselves than protecting our children. My own child stood in front of you and asked how a pedophile could keep their job, and the District still has not answered that question. What have you done to fix the system that protects pedophiles? Why should we trust you to protect us through COVID when our District harbored pedophiles for 20 years? Dr. Faust, you've come to our county at probably the worst possible time. You said it was important to look forward. Unfortunately, our community needs to heal, and we cannot heal until you and the Board recognize the trauma our families have experienced. You did not create this problem, but it is your responsibility to address it. We need transparency and communication. Dr. Faust, we need to hear from you. I appreciate that you called me, but we need regular, consistent written communication. We need to know who you are. We need to know, we need you to talk to us because you literally have our lives in your hands. As a parent, I need to know every single one of you have my children's safety and best interests as top priority. I truly do not believe this to be true, and frankly, I feel bullied by the District and Board to send my children to school. Decisions are being made that I do not understand and are hurting my children. Does not feel our children are your priority. Told to trust you despite years of lies. I'm told to trust you despite my children losing instruction. Told to trust you when COVID reporting is now weekly versus daily. Why can New Hanover County not report more frequently when Brunswick County Schools can? I'm told to trust you when information is not consistent or in one accessible location. I'm told to trust you when you do not respond to emails or acknowledge our fears and concerns. I'm told to trust you when you somehow make yourselves the victims. It's not about you, it's about our teachers and students. I don't want to come to these meetings and speak. I do not want to be a thorn in your side. I want to trust you and have faith that my children will be okay, that their teachers will be okay. Please be honest and transparent. Make that your priority so I can trust you and stop speaking at these meetings. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Barbara Hart Anderson.
Board members and administration, this is Barbara Anderson, and I wish to thank you for your tireless work of all that members and staff have put forth over the last 10 months to ensure that our schools, our students, staff, and families remain safe and engaged in education. Although the positive cases are rising in our schools, they are low and below many other districts in the state. Thank you all, especially Mr. Anderson and Ms. Anderson and their staff for the safety and space protocols put in place. After all, safety and health of all is what will make the opening work, not test scores or learning growth. We have a new student superintendent and in December, a new school board. We have a chance to have a new beginning for the District, make positive strides in educating students, bring equity and respect to our educators, students, and families, build trust, inhale from the trauma from past administration. Schools do not operate within a bubble. What happens in the District and within the school buildings is the business of the community, all of us. It is a symbiotic relationship. The COVID-19 pandemic has made that relationship very clear, for one cannot function without the other. What happens in this school does have a ripple effect on the community. The pandemic is not going away this year and probably not next year. I hope that as you think about educating during a pandemic, you think about building of trust within and through the community, and when planning, to really think about whether increasing expectations really is productive for educators and students. Too much of a good thing can become toxic. I will leave you with this from a dedicated teacher. She shared with me, and this is what she said, "There are too many moving parts and changes happening in education. I'm honestly surprised that we know our left from our right. Eyes tell so much about a person. The eyes I see at work aren't the same eyes from last year. The eyes I see of my colleagues show anxiety, exhaustion, tears, confusion, and so much more. These emotions are all masked behind the smile we all try to show under our face masks so that students and their families don't have to feel what we all feel and experience behind the scenes. These aren't the eyes you look forward to at school break like you used to. These eyes are the eyes of educators who are desperate to relocate their why in their career choice and to speed to their vehicles when the time is appropriate to leave at the end of the day. Just know we are trying. This is hard. Teaching under any plan with the state of the world is hard, and we constantly face new challenges and hiccups. Please have some grace and try to think from every perspective before you jump the gun and assume or complain about what educators are doing or aren't doing. And remember that educators, we are following guidelines from higher powers. So pick a bone with them, not us. We are doing our best. Positivity is one thing, but toxic positivity is something else. Please take care of our educators, our students, and families. We thank you for your time. We thank you for your care, and we hope that you will continue to be transparent about your decisions so that the community has the facts, the truth, and honesty. Thank you for your time."
Amy.
Angie Candy.
I should just speak on behalf of another forgotten victim of sexual abuse within our schools who also just happens to be a New Hanover County educator. Perhaps you may recall a recent article in Port City Daily with regard to this family who is still searching after six years for answers after their child was sexually assaulted at Bradley Creek Elementary under the leadership of Jane Keiker. While the school system readily admits this abuse due to their own negligence, there has been no consequence for these actions, nor have there been provisions to provide therapeutic support to the victim. It also appears that New Hanover County Schools does not follow legal procedures for investigation and as withheld pertinent information from the victim's family, prohibit enclosure and healing. As a social worker and former counselor at a Level 3 residential treatment facility for abused and neglected children, I have seen firsthand as both the victim and an advocate the trauma of sexual abuse. It is mind-boggling to me to see that our school system perpetuates continuing a cycle of abuse rather than looking to eliminate it. How can this family, who do not even know the degree to which their special-needs child was raped or assaulted, seek to ensure that this behavior is not repeated and protect their child? I also found it incredibly disturbing to know that as mandated reporters, proper protocol and lawful behaviors were not followed. I was sickened to hear how this mother was the last one notified and dismissed with callous words of, "It was just a touch, and at least he's still young," as though it were insignificant. What a horrible response from the District. The school then deliberately sabotaged an investigation by failing to ensure that proper evidence was collected through initiating the process of a forensic interview and medical exam immediately after this inappropriate sexual encounter occurred. Do you have any idea what you compromised in the delayed process of sending a child home to bathe and wash away pertinent evidence? That is inexcusable, and anyone in the field knows the magnitude of that error. To then deny the mother the specific details of what happened to her own child and further threaten her job for inquiring is disgusting. I strongly believe in staying positive and celebrating success, but to hear the analogy of only looking through the windshield of the future with no acknowledgement of the rear-view mirror mistakes is a slap in the face to victims of sexual abuse. How can you focus on the future when you have made no attempt to remedy the past? Furthermore, your constant criticisms and refusal to work with advocates for these families is contradictory to what you claim is your goal. You tell us to trust you to keep our children safe and be patient as the process plays out. Trust is earned, not demanded, and in desperate need of being rebuilt here, and suggesting patience to a family suffering from years of trauma is cruel and insensitive. I'm hopeful that with the addition of four new school board members, we will have found a path to change through transparency, compassion, and accountability who support stronger communication strategies as opposed to silencing voices and who will continue to seek justice for these families to regain our trust. Thanks.
Leslie Martin.
Dr. Faust and members of the Board, my name is Leslie Posey, and I am a retired New Hanover County Schools ESL teacher. In my 30 years, I have taught all grade levels. I want to speak to you about trust. Trust is a vital commodity that our school community has lost. This is especially true among teachers. Many teachers no longer trust you because their voices are not heard or appreciated. This has not always been true, but it is now. Many teachers also choose not to speak out because of fear of retaliation. This can be changed. I would like to suggest that on every county-level decision-making committee, you include at least three current classroom teachers, one elementary, one middle, and one high school. People cannot trust when they have no voice. The community's trust in you has been lost. You can rebuild it. It will take time, communication, and pure honesty. I urge you to start that rebuilding process now. Thank you.
Amanda White.
Hello, Board members. Dr. Faust, District Leader, and also our new Board members that will soon be here in January. I'm first going to thank those who have been here and who have served. Thank you for being here, and I hope that you enjoy your time off because I know that it's been very stressful. But I do want to talk about the big topic for tonight, which is going to be the failures. And this is going to be the focus of the failures of the students completing work. So our students have not necessarily struggled with understanding the content they're learning, they're just struggling with completing all the work they've been assigned. So we could blame edgenuity, teachers' expectations, or technology. However, none of these are actually the root of the issue of why students are not completing work. There are many students that are thriving in this online environment and are choosing to stay home and not come in, but there are students that are struggling to complete their work due to structure, motivation, and understanding the value of an education. And these three things are the reasons why students are failing at the higher rates than normal. So I want to dive into that a little bit. I think that we can all agree that teachers provide structure on a daily basis. It's actually why parents want their students or want their children in school because teachers know how to manage children in the classroom. So we appreciate parents that recognize our skill and value our hard work, but we must understand that students who lack motivation to complete assignments cannot be forced to complete these assignments because it's a decision now of the student to not log into their LMS and complete work or complete a test that's assigned to them. So this is not a teacher issue, this is actually a parent issue. Parents, we're urging you to please make sure that your child logs in every day, takes assessments, and downloads the work for the week. Teachers would greatly appreciate your support in this area alone. We don't expect you to teach your children. We've got that. But we just want to make sure that they have access to the material that they're supposed to access to be successful. Now, I do want to point out the fact that according to the ACLU, that all kids living in the United States have the right to a free public education, and the Constitution requires that all kids be given an equal education opportunity no matter what their race, ethnic background, religion, or sex, or whether they're rich, poor, a citizen or non-citizen. But what this does not mean is that all students have the right to a free high school diploma provided they do nothing. So what we, what we do with students, what do we do with students that just don't understand the value of a high school degree? Or, sorry, a high school diploma? Do we make them come into the classroom and complete their work? Do we go to their houses and make them complete their work? Do we pass them for the sake of passing? What do we make them do to be successful? And these are the things that we would like for you to consider moving forward, considering these failures.
Is that the last one, Ms. Adams? That's all? That's all? All right, thank you very much, and thank you to all who spoke.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is Item 6, Information. We will start with COVID-19 Update. I would like to welcome to the microphone Dr. Philip Brown, Chief Physician Executive of New Hanover Regional Hospital. We are very grateful that he is here to speak with us about the state of COVID here in New Hanover County. Thank you for being here, Dr. Brown.
Thank you for having me. And I'd also like to say thank you for the way schools have gone so far. I've got two teenagers in school. They happen to be doing the home education, but that's going, I think, as well as it could possibly be. And I'd also like to say, from a COVID standpoint, the healthcare community- And I'd also like to say from a COVID standpoint, the healthcare community thanks you because it's been done safely, not perfectly, but it's not a perfect world. And we happen to know that cases are really going up right now across the country, across the state and across New Hanover County. So just for context, in the United States, there have been about 10 million cases, 239,000 deaths. In North Carolina, 297,000 cases and 4,660 deaths. Right now in North Carolina, we have 1,230 patients in the hospital, which is beginning to impose a little bit of a strain on the statewide hospitals, but it's still manageable at this point. I think the Health Department folks are going to present New Hanover County, so I'll leave that out. And I'll go to the New Hanover Regional update. We have actually discharged 616 COVID patients during the course of the pandemic, and there have been 100 deaths in our facility. These represent a regional number and are not simply the New Hanover County deaths because we serve the region. For the last six weeks or so, we've been averaging either in the high twenties to the mid thirties for a census after reaching a sort of a mid-teens average number for several weeks. Patients who are sick enough to be hospitalized have about a 14% mortality in our facility, and many of these are elderly and have other conditions, although not all. So with that said, the hospital is in a good position to take care of patients that are sick at this point in time and at this level. As I said right now, today, we actually have 33 patients hospitalized. If that number gets into the 50s, it begins to change what we can do in terms of non-time sensitive procedures and changes some of the procedural elements that we can do for the community. So we really always like to engage the whole community in preventive-type efforts. And again, what you've done in the school has worked, and I would say there's also been something that we've noticed, it's a little early in the season, but one thing we've noticed in our pediatric population is that the number of admissions to our pediatric hospital for respiratory syncytial virus and things that are related to upper respiratory problems is actually dramatically lower this year than normal. That is likely due to a lot of the practices that we're seeing around COVID in the schools, and so that is really a job well done. We don't know if that trend will last farther into the season, but for now, it's a very promising, promising thing. Today in our state, the governor changed a little bit of the executive order, I'm sure you're aware of it, probably talked about it earlier. It just extended Phase Three to December 4th, but also rolled back the gathering limits in certain situations to 10. Folks have been really eagerly awaiting vaccine, and we got some good news on the vaccine, although all of it is unofficial at this point, right? The FDA has not made any comment. The drug company has said there's 90% efficacy. It's a pretty tricky vaccine, and that's important to understand. What this vaccine requires is extreme refrigeration, actually. You can actually keep it in a regular freezer, but you can only open that freezer for two minutes every 24 hours to get that vaccine out. Once that vaccine is out, it has to be vaccinated into a human within an hour. And there has to be two of those vaccines in series for it to be effective. So we're really waiting on the FDA to understand what that's like. The timeline that we most recently heard is that even if the FDA extends approval, they would like to wait six more weeks for the remaining results from that trial to come in. So that puts us really towards the end of calendar 20, best-case scenario. And then with that, there has to be the whole rollout of everything. It looks like that the vaccine is going to be made available to high-risk healthcare workers first, and then other high-risk patients second. So we don't know how that's going to affect really a population of people, but really a vaccine that solves the problem of transmission is down the road a bit, probably this time next year, best-case scenario, before it can be widely available. So that really leaves us with the same things that we know have been working all along in our community for a long time, did really well, is masks, it's hand washing, it's physical distancing of that six-foot border, and it's avoiding gatherings to the extent you can. But certainly when there has to be any gathering at all, it increases the importance of that masking and that hand hygiene. So we really start forecasting what we might see over the coming days because we know right now in North Carolina, cases are the highest they've ever been. There's also more testing than there's ever been, but there's more to it than just that because the hospitalizations are going up and we're starting to see that first uptick in deaths as well with this particular surge. So we know this is a real phenomenon, but we think the likely peak is going to be in January and February, and it's likely going to be based on the phenomenon of the stacking of holidays, particularly around Thanksgiving where you have families gathering, traveling to a greater extent, followed by Christmas. And the normal pattern that we've been seeing is simply that after that exposure event, it's three and a half-ish weeks before we start seeing the hospitalized patients pick up, and it's about four and a half to five weeks before the deaths pick up. So that kind of informs where the peak is. But I want to go back to the one thing that we can do to affect it, and that really is masking. So everything we can do to be really diligent in masking because we know that if a community, this has been proven in many other countries and in certain states and regions of the United States, if masking is done diligently over a period of four weeks, the case prevalence will drop by 80%. And at that point in time, you have a whole different situation. So from what I would ask of you would be to continue to do the types of things you've been doing. You pledged to us to be looking at the information, willing to change if change was needed. That time has not come. It's not time to change either way right now from the medical community standpoint. It's time to hold the line, continue what you're doing. And we would also ask you to make some considerations for how you re-enter after that winter break in January. Does that need to be phased? Does there need to be some testing phenomenon that may occur at that point in time? We're not sure, but we do have time to figure it out, so we would ask that you consider that, again, depending on what the case numbers do. So thank you again for being, you know, flexible to what's happening and really keeping a close eye on what's happening, being willing to adapt on the fly because that's what we've all had to do during this pandemic. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. I'm just curious, when you do have someone that's hospitalized, what's in for COVID? What is an average time length that they are in the hospital from entrance time to recovery?
That has a range a little bit. Early on, it was into double-digit days. We've certainly had patients that were in there for a long time and survived, right? Over a month. And then averages eight-ish days, seven, eight days.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here, Dr. Brown. I just had just one clarifying question. You have not seen any evidence of spread within a school. I know we've had a lot of cases here and there, but you have not seen any evidence of widespread communication from person to person in a school?
We don't, we can't identify any from what we're looking at, you know? And I know there have been sporadic cases around, and you know, what I think that means is that the protocols have been addressed as they were intended to, that people were notified that the testing and tracking worked and that those potential spread events were controlled. That's really important. Again, this is a really imperfect time for all of us in this global pandemic. This has never happened before in all of our lifetimes, 102 years. And you know, just being flexible, paying attention to the data and being willing to change if you need to, that's all anybody can ask. Again, really grateful for your willingness to do that.
Dr. Brown, thank you very much for being here. I really appreciate it. I know everybody that's listening appreciates the information you're sharing. You did mention about the deaths in the hospital, that there were other people besides high-risk that have died. What age group would that be in as far as several deaths, you know, younger, less, I guess, excuse me, say, people having those kinds of problems?
In our facility, I'm unaware of any pediatric deaths, which would be the most pertinent thing to this particular discussion. We do know nationwide there have been some, and there have certainly been some children that have been very sick nationwide as well. But again, the predominance of the deaths are older people with multiple comorbidities, although there have been healthy people really all over the world that have succumbed. And it's because we're just learning about this virus. You know, this virus is eight, nine months old. There's a lot of science that's undiscovered about it, and we're learning very fast. Part of the reason that you see our length of stay decreasing is we've learned some fairly effective treatments. They're all supportive, they don't cure the disease, but they treat the symptoms and get the patient back to a state where their body can fight off the disease. So all these things are really positive trends in our understanding of the disease and our ability to treat it, but it's still very dangerous, and actually it's pretty preventable just with masks.
How about the long-term effects? People survive, but are you seeing a lot of long-term effects physically with, say, maybe younger people that aren't as high at risk?
We're not seeing a whole lot of local long-termers, although there are several. And we're still learning all kinds of different things about the effects of this disease long-term. So there certainly are those patients locally, they're a small number, but it's a real phenomenon, to be sure.
You also, when you first were introducing yourself and speaking about your children, you said that your children are still at home, so as a professional, you feel more comfortable with your kids. Not that doesn't work for everybody, but you say you feel more comfortable with your kids at home?
Well, I do. I mean, you know, and there's also a consistency piece for that for me, you know, when I advocate not gathering to the maximum extent possible, and I know that I have a really solid internet setup at my home and that those things will work for my kids' education, I just try to reduce the risk as much as I possibly can. But that's really a personal decision at that point. And it wasn't an easy one, actually. I mean, we've grappled with it back and forth and still do. I mean, at some point, it will be time to go back, I'm just not sure when that is quite just yet.
Well, thank you, as I said, thank you again for coming and speaking honestly to us about this really important situation. I really appreciate your professional knowledge. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Yes, very much. Dr. Brown, you've been a very important voice in New Hanover County since the start, so thank you very much. Are there any other questions or discussion from anyone else on the board? All right. Thank you very much, sir, for coming. We appreciate you. All right, next up on our list is under our COVID-19 update, it's our 2020-2021 opening update, and I believe our entire senior staff is a part of this presentation. So Dr. Faust, I will send it to you.
Ready. All right. Well, thank you. Good evening. Yeah, we're going to go through quickly the work group updates and, you know, and how things have been going over the first few weeks of school. With operations, I'm going to go back to the same three categories that have, or departments that I've been reporting on so far, which is child nutrition, transportation and facilities. Under child nutrition, just a reminder that the USDA has extended the summer food service program for the remainder of the current school year. The significance of that is it allows us to continue to feed students or children, they don't necessarily have to be students, we can feed all children 18 years of age or younger. In addition to our normal meal service within our schools, we're currently operating our curbside grab-and-go program at 28 school sites and 22 neighborhood sites. So in total, we've served about 400,000 meals since transitioning to Plan B. And the remote learners, our grab-and-go option in the neighborhood sites account for about 2,500 of those daily. So that is down from where we were through the summer when everyone was remote. We were a little over twice that number, so you would expect it to be about half now since at any given time, we have half our population in. Staffing at our child nutrition sites, our school sites continues to be a challenge, but we have been able to cover our schools utilizing substitutes and sharing of school staff. Bus transportation, I will say it was a challenging first week. They're all challenging first weeks. They truly are. But this year in particular, we were essentially operating two transportation programs. And we have set up one set of buses and routes and stops for Mondays and Tuesdays for the AA students, and a whole different set of routes and stops for Thursdays and Fridays for the BB students. And then we had to ensure that our full-time students were coordinated. And it's been difficult for all of us. Sometimes if you're a full-time student, you will be assigned to one bus on Monday and Tuesdays and a different bus on Thursdays and Fridays. But we have been working through all of that. The biggest challenges were with our EC students, as I mentioned, our full-time students, McKenney Bento students. But I'm happy to say we are now operating smoothly, and we're really responding to individual requests or concerns at this point. So while the first week had challenges, I can say that each week after has gotten a little better and a little better. Aside from our bus assignments, some of the families, the biggest concern has been with community stops. We have responded to all concerns, personally talked to a lot of people. We've adjusted stops when possible. We'll go out and look at the stop, we'll talk to the parents, we'll talk to the principal. And when it is possible or when it's considered a safety hazard, we will adjust those, we have adjusted those stops. But I would say overwhelmingly, our families have been understanding of the challenges and very supportive in knowing what community stops have enabled us to do. Currently, we are down 32 drivers from March of last year. We have hired three new bus drivers since August and have additional candidates in the CDL program now. We implemented a new process of not only tracking our candidates, but really helping them along the way, staying in touch with them, and it is proven to be very effective. This year, we have 10,400 students assigned to buses. That's down from 13,200 last year. This year, we're averaging less than three to four buses late per day. And I will say that even if they are late, I had five or 10 minutes up there, I think that's really down to almost three minutes now. Last week, we had a couple of days where we had zero late buses, and late buses are being measured in minutes. So it's something that we were really focused on improving, and I congratulate the transportation staff. The plan has been very effective. And under the plan for, we have actually 54 fewer stops while consuming 40% less fuel and traveling 32 fewer miles per day. Those are significant numbers, and without community stops and without those reductions, we could not be successful. And I'd like to thank all the principals, our families for understanding and working with us on that. On the facility side, all schools have received PPEs and supplies. Cleaning procedures have proven to be effective. There have been very few concerns, and wherever there were issues, we have been addressing And I would just, again, like to thank principals, teachers and staff, and especially our school families and our students, not just for understanding, but for following the guidelines that we've implemented.
they're up? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Justice.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, we're down 32 drivers. What do you attribute that to? Are not hiring? They're not, they're quitting? What's going on with that?
Well, it, it's really a combination. We've had some resignations, some retirements, some promotions, and some long-term leave as well, as well as the, the Federal Cares Act leave. We think some of those will come, come back at the end of, at the end of this, this calendar year. But it's, I couldn't, I couldn't attribute that to one thing. It's just really been a, a combination of all of those things.
So, how many drivers are we down then considering that we're, like, I guess you could say almost 3,000 students less that were, and we've got the community stops and all these less stops? So, how many drivers are we down considering the circumstances?
Well, you know, of course, down 32 drivers from, from March prior, prior to COVID. To give you an idea on, on routes, I think we were up around 135, 140 routes. We have 105 routes that we're running now. One of the things that, that was our goal was to create a driver pool. We average about 9% absenteeism a day, and to have six or eight drivers in, in that substitute pool has enabled us to respond very quickly to those absences and assign those drivers to, to, to those routes before that route is scheduled to start. It's been instrumental and very critical in, in helping us reduce our delays.
Sounds like it's really hard to determine how, you're not really necessarily down because of the circumstances. You're, you're functioning and making it work. And it sounds like it's working pretty good considering everything.
It, it is working, it is working very well. It, it really is. And, and again, transportation put together a really good plan and they've implemented it well. Being down 32 drivers, had we not reduced these routes and made the changes with community stops and all the other things that we've done, you know, we, if we were in this situation last year, down 32 drivers, I would not be here telling you that things are going well. I would be telling you, we're in dire straits. So, it's, I, I don't know, you know, coincidence or, or whatever, but, you know, we, we're fortunate in that, that aspect.
Mr. Anderson, have you, have you started developing a plan for Plan A yet in terms of bus routes and, and things like that?
We have not. Right now, we are, we are still responding to individual requests for routes. As you know, we, we also just made changes in our remote learning labs. So, we, we have quite a few students that are eligible to, to go to school full-time and, and we are busy assigning them. You know, transitioning to, you know, a Plan A, I don't, you know, the, the biggest thing would be that we, you know, just had time to, to, to do that. You could essentially, I mean, it's, if we were, if we were transitioning to Plan A for a K-5 model, you know, we would essentially just take one or, one or the other, either the AA right routes or BB routes and make some minor modifications.
But one of the things that we have to consider, especially for the transportation, is that even though the governor said that the K-5 could go to a Plan A model, it did not release the restrictions for transportation to a Plan A model.
Yeah, one of the challenges, and it's not a challenge, it would be just a, a decision that our school system would have to make. When the governor allowed K-5 to go full-time, almost the very next day, the Department of Health and Human Services issued a revision to our guidelines where previously, they said under Plan A, you should practice social distance to the maximum extent feasible. The revision says if a school district elects to go to Plan A, they strongly recommend that you follow the procedures in Plan B for transportation, which is essentially impossible.
Right.
I mean, there's no way we could transport 100% of our students with the, with the reduction in bus capacity.
How many routes would that look like in the morning? I mean, you're already doing some double, doing double routes. I mean, if you're talking about, would that be?
We have, yeah, I don't know the actual percentage, but we, we do have quite a few of our buses that are, that are doing double routes. Some buses that are already doing triple routes with pre-K. So, they'll run a pre-K route, then come back and do two K-5 routes at the same school.
What time do you start now?
I don't know what time the first stop is. I'd have to look at that. The pre-Ks are pretty, pretty early, but it, it hasn't changed significantly from what it was last year, just because our routes are so much quicker. That's, that's the key.
Just quickly looking ahead, and I know it's, it's hard to project, but would you anticipate, because it looks like these community stops have been very successful in limiting some of our delays. Would you anticipate them becoming a fixture even when we're back in Plan A?
I think that all depends on how our bus driver shortage goes. You know, I think the community stops are critical due to availability of bus drivers and reduced capacity. You know, we're all assuming that, that we will improve in our bus driver shortage. And, you know, if we do that, I think we could, we could expand on our routes. Honestly, I don't think we would go back to 100% of where we were prior to COVID.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, just have a brief update from the teaching and learning at this time. Dr. Smith will be up later. So, I just want to share with you the number of devices that we have provided and checked out to students and teachers, between laptops and iPads, hotspots, webcams, microphones. We are still getting requests. Mostly the requests we're getting now for hotspots, so we are fulfilling those requests as they come in. And then, training that we have provided for teachers. We have actively met with some principals to request what their teachers need. We're having my instructional staff meeting with teachers one-on-one, providing them assistance and guidance. So, we are both promoting stuff ahead of time and then just as, as need fits, you know, going out and meeting with teachers one-on-one to help them out.
Ms. Brinson, the, I'm sorry. Go ahead. A quick question about, lost my slide here, about the training. It says remote learning. Can you just explain what that looks like?
Okay, we did some initial training back, we created it back at the beginning of the year to provide teachers on just remote train, remote learning, the different learning management systems and the different tools that we had, how to engage students, how to do feedback for students, because the way you teach online is not the same way you, you teach face-to-face. And that's a big part of the, some of the issues that we're having and concerns. Teachers just aren't used to teaching this way. This is not what we've asked them to do. We've not been a one-on-one district. They've not taught in a remote environment. So, we're providing assistance and training and resources to teachers to help them, you know, provide better feedback, different opportunities and ways to provide feedback to the students.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for Ms. Brinson?
Yes, Ms. Brinson. So, all of our students now in this system have a device, is that correct?
All of the students that, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And connectivity?
All the students that have requested devices that we have been made aware of, we have provided devices. They, I would imagine, because we're still getting requests for hotspots, we're not getting as many requests for devices from schools, that for some reason, parents are requesting hotspots, so schools are requesting them for us. We're getting like, you know, five or 10 a day here, and so, we're fulfilling those requests.
Is that difficult to do or is that moving along relatively quickly?
As soon as we get the request, we pass it along and we get the devices out to the kid. We make sure everything's working and we get the devices out to the school so they can check them out. So, it's, it's moving fairly along. I think some, some parents are just now deciding that they need stuff, you know, or maybe they didn't need something and situations have changed and they need something now. So, we're, we're providing what we can. And we have devices still, so that's not a problem.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Brinson. Ms. Mary Hazel Small.
Good evening. I wanted to just give you a brief update on our funding from state and federal sources related to COVID. So, this, I know there's a lot up here, but just for future reference, this is showing you that to date, we have received or been granted 12.1 million in additional state and federal funds. That first line at the top are the state emergency funds we got last year. Most of the rest of the funds are, are federal, and we used part of the federal funds for child nutrition at, at the end of last year, but everything else, we're using this year and next. I did want to mention that, you know, for future reference, this, this shows you the categories of funding in terms of what type of grant it falls under and who is sort of determining how the funds are used, and also the expiration dates and the dollar amounts. The summary here shows us that most of the funding, everything to the right, a little over 50%, is, is funded from the Cares Act, the Elementary and Secondary Education Relief Act, and that is the most flexible funds. We can use it for all the things that we can use our normal federal funds for to support educational purposes, but also the emergency relief, the PPE, all those types of things. We also received a little bit from the State Reserve, which is also part of that same grant, but the, the state was allowed to decide what the purpose would be. We also, also funding Cares Act, you've, you've heard of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. So, that meant, meant that the state legislature decided how those funds would be used. And so, all those amounts shown in orange, that, that's the percent of that, and all of that has to be spent by the end of December. And so, that was much more, you know, PPE, emergency relief, additional supplies, those types of things. So, there were 12, actually 12 different grants. So, the final group that we have received or pending received is the, the Governor's Emergency Relief Fund, and that was mainly two purposes, which is for, let me see if I can find it here. See, I think, I think I've got that on the next page, but that is, it's more instructional support, instructional and mental health support. So, we don't have those funds yet, but they're, we know the amount and they're being allotted very soon. The final slide shows, if I can get it to advance, the breakdown of how we're spending the money. So, we budgeted it as it's allotted to us. So, to date, we've received, it's been allotted almost 10.3 million. We have budgeted, and that's 85% of total, and then we have spent or encumbered the amount shown there. We have spent or encumbered about, I can't see the percentage from here, but 3.8 million and with another million spent last year. So, we expect to use quite a bit of these funds next year, a little bit of stabilization funds for, for positions and that, that type of thing, as well as addressing all the educational supports needed for students. So, the whole right side of that chart shows the, the types of expenditures and the, the words got cut off a little bit. So, we've got special education, regular education, alternative, which is actually a remedial. So, most of the funds are going for direct educational services, but also the operational needs of supplies and, and all the things that we needed for maintenance. Also, computers and the, the child nutrition support. And then, the last category shown there is the, the school-based support in terms of mental health. So, that is currently how all these funds are, are budgeted with additional funds that will be received soon. Any questions?
Ms. Small, with the Cares Act funding, that the, the budget item that has to be spent by December 31st, are we in any danger of not being able to exhaust that money?
We, we are a little bit concerned about some of the computers that were ordered and the state's working with us. As long, as long as we receive them, we'll be able to pay for them in the new year, but we need to receive them or at least have assurances. I'm looking at Dawn, and they're, they're working with us. If we have done everything we can, and I think there's just a little bit of a supply shortage right now statewide, so that is the only thing we're really concerned about. Otherwise, I think we'll spend all the funds.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Next up, Ms. Varnum and the Health Department team, I believe.
Good evening.
You come with the crew.
And I also have Carla Turner. You guys are well acquainted with Carla. Thank you for being here. And her team, Donna.
I would like to introduce Donna Faco. If you understand it, Donna is our new Health and Human Services Director, so she is the leader of Health and DSS now. So, we are tickled to have her. November, no, October.
We can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Right here. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Robert Bark. Donna Faco is our new Health and Human Services Director. She is now leading Health and DSS, and she's been with us since October?
October 6th.
6th, yes. So, we are breaking her in in New Hanover County.
Well, welcome. Yes, we're very excited to have you. Thank you for being here tonight, Ms. Faco.
And we also have Mr. Philip Tarte, our Health Director.
Thank you for being here too, also.
Okay. So, am I operating this? Oh, I didn't bring any hand sanitizer with me, but I'll do this. I'll do it as soon as I get back. So, you all have, you, you have your handout for our reopening NHCS decision guidance. And this is really built on the, the documentation provided by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, where we had a sample reopening K-12 schools decision tree, really based on some more statewide measures. And so, we, among the work of our health work group and some having to spend a little more time than others involved in this kind of project, we have developed this metric or metric system or kind of a, a vision infographic of what the metrics would look like. So, first, want to talk a little bit about analysis of local metrics for determining Plan A. So, again, this is really not talking about a timeline. This is talking about the metrics that would need to be in place. So, first, we've got cases with COVID-like symptoms. There would need to be an analysis of particular cases that may not come with an exact positive, but are COVID-like symptoms. And we have seen, and I'm sure that Carla can speak more about this, we have seen in our transition to isolating households. So, if we've got siblings and one sibling has COVID-like symptoms, unless that's ruled out, we're following our Health Department guidance and state guidance on isolating the entire household. And so, that would kind of fall into that. The next would be positive COVID cases. Of course, we're monitoring those. And next, the percent of positive tests. Carla's gonna tell you a little bit more about our local metrics on that. And then, of course, hospitalizations. So, the numbers of hospitalizations would be important, because then we are gonna talk about the capacities for reopening. So, those metrics allow us to have the conversation about capacities. So, for New Hanover County schools, specific to the school district, the capacities that we want to pay the closest attention to, of course, we're gonna be using the county metrics, but we want to focus on substitute staff coverage. We want to also focus on our PPE supplies. How much capacity do we have in those? Our school nurse coverage, we know that we still, and I don't, oh, Carla's gonna speak about it, we still have a couple of school nurse vacancies. And then, the next would be the contact tracing capacity, because if we aren't able to maintain substitute staff coverage for classrooms when we have teachers out, either because they are ill or for any number of reasons, but especially for those extended absences, if we don't have the PPE- if we don't have the PPE supplies, if we don't have the school nurse coverage, coverage, we won't have that contact tracing support as well. And then for community-specific, just as Dr. Brown was speaking about, the community and, and broader community for us, we have to focus on that capacity for testing that's outside of our control and outside of our setting, and then also the capacity for hospital access and ICU beds. So added at the bottom of this decision guidance in those two areas here, just giving a little insight on our New Hanover County Schools' staff coverage capacity. So in working back and forth with human resources, our team within human resources, we've really kind of landed on 105 teacher absences, and that would be those extended 10 to 14-day isolations or quarantines that would really put us in a pretty difficult spot to keep moving. So less than 105 teacher absences, we're able to keep managing and keep, keep pumping along. But I do have a little bit of information on our sub-use. So, and just for example, this week, you know, for, for Monday, we had planned for 73 subs to be covering, Tuesday around 57, and that was at, we were operating at an 80% fill rate, meaning that we were not able to really fill other, all of those positions. And many of our staff in the buildings are, so teachers alike, teachers and support staff are working diligently to cover spots. We have instructional coaches, assistant principals, student support staff, other teachers filling in to cover spots when we're really needing to support those absences. And generally, we have been, Tuesday was a high rate with an 80%, generally, we've been hovering around 54 to 64% fill rate. So substitute coverage is a, is a pretty big deal for us that we have to really focus on. And then one of the important points that we want to mention is that the New Hanover County percent positive rate that we would need to focus on would be 5% or less. And then Carla's going to speak to you about what that looks like in our community. But our goal, of course, at the bottom, you'll see, is that we would have our COVID metrics continue to stabilize or move in a positive direction for a period of 14 consecutive days.
I'll let you go ahead and speak to those other parts.
Okay, thank you. As we're looking at, I think you probably have our infographic on the backside of, of Ms. Varnum's handout to you. If we're looking at our five to 17-year-old age range, we, we went back and from the beginning of, of our first positive in Hanover County, which was March 19th, we have had 104 positive cases among the five to 10-year-old range, and we've had 216 positive cases among the 11 to 17-year-old range. We also looked at, since school started on, in Plan B on October 12th, we've had 58 positive cases in the five to 17-year-old age range, but I want to caution you, that doesn't necessarily mean that all of those students go to New Hanover County public schools. We've had positives in private schools, we've had positives in charter schools. I can't pull that out from my spreadsheet, so we just have our total numbers. So that's where we're sitting in the first four weeks of school. Speaking to percent positive, you can see, we broke out each week in October where we were, so the average for October is 5.75%, which is above what your, what your, what any of us are shooting for. We'd like to be less than 5%. But we are also pushing some additional testing opportunities in New Hanover County. At the Health Department, our criteria for testing folks with our kits is you have to be symptomatic or you have to be a close contact to a positive case. We have been able to partner with North Carolina DHHS and Federal HHS to provide surge testing to folks in the community who meet that criteria or who have been at a large gathering and they're concerned, or who just are concerned and want to be tested. And that's our surge testing that we are doing out at UNCW, and anybody can come to that, it is free, and it is from noon to 4:00, Tuesday through Friday afternoons. So we want the community to come through if they're concerned to be tested. So we do have that additional opportunity that we are doing right now through December 19th, we're planning to do that. So that is an opportunity for anybody in the community. And you can go to our Health Department webpage and find out how to pre-register. You have to pre-register when you come through, so. We are also doing some community outreaches with testing through our Health Department staff. We're trying to focus on our historically marginalized populations. So we're doing Monday afternoons from 4:00 to 6:00 at various sites around town, and then Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 11:00 at additional sites. We've partnered with our faith community and had some really great cooperation throughout the community with those churches, as well as Wilmington Housing Authority. And I do want to point out, I have the positives in surrounding counties. Keep in mind though, these, what I've given you up top is 5 to 17. These positives, I pull the percentage from the state's website, and it doesn't break down like that, so it's 10 to 17. So there's another group of positives in there that, that I don't have in our school age. And speaking to the vacancies, we do have two school nurse vacancies right now. One of those is at Castlehan Elementary, but the nice thing about Castlehan is it's on the same campus as Holly Shelter Middle School, and we have a great seasoned nurse at Holly Shelter that can step in and help as needed, and we're also providing coverage from our other nurses to help out as we can. And we also have a temp nurse who we, I'm like a substitute nurse, that we send to wherever we need to have her, so.
Do you have any questions for me?
I do have a quick question from Ms. Varnum. I just want to understand, we need substitutes. We get hundreds of emails every day from parents who have all sorts of different concerns, but I would just like to put out there publicly, if you're a mother or a father or just a volunteer with a heart to serve, now is the time. It would be empowering. Again, we're a team, we're a family in New Hanover County, so if you're in a position to help, we could really use some substitutes. You can help us get back as, as fastly or as quickly and as safely as possible. So I just wanted to put that out there for our community.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I'm certainly not going to speak for human resources, but I know that we, we definitely have had shared requests with our volunteers, asking them if they would be willing to spend a little more time with us and potentially get paid for it. So, you know, certainly need more staff.
Thank you.
Are there any questions regarding the, the guidance tree?
I do have one comment that, on what Nelson just said, and I don't know if human resources can look at this, but I, I think we've all heard the issue with some substitute teachers not being able to teach because they have kids at home. I, I don't know if there's a way to waive the, the policy for substitutes since we appear to be in such dire needs, but allowing their children to actual, actually participate in full-time schooling, to me, seems like a win-win. I mean, you know, if those parents, those teachers want their kids in school, they can have them, but then we're getting the benefit of having other substitute teachers that can teach a lot more than just simply their kids. So I would ask, you know, Dr. Faust to look at that, because I think that will help alleviate our substitute teachers a little bit, or the situation.
We can definitely do that.
Yes, and I did have one question about the testing. What is the turnaround time now? I mean, it's, it's moved up considerably and there's different kinds of tests, but what are the turnaround times on the testing?
With our outreaches, Ms. Justice, the surge testing, we're getting results, well, the people who are being tested, they have to, they get an email with their results. If they're positive and they live in Hanover County, we're going to get their results and we're going to reach out to them. But about two to three days is what we're seeing right now with that turnaround time. We are partnering with a group called E True North, and those samples go to a lab in South Carolina. And that testing at UNCW, it's in Parking Lot 1A, which is near Trask Coliseum and the track, it's at the corner of Hurst and Hamilton, and that is self-administered testing. So the staff shows the person what they need to do and observes the citizen swabbing their own nose. So that's that testing. And then our testing that we're doing with our community outreaches, again, is about a two to four-day turnaround time, just depending.
That's the same with this group that's at UNCW?
Yeah, UNCW is about two, we've seen about two to three days in, in the two weeks we've been doing it. The first six days that we offer the testing, we did over 1,100 tests. So we have been very, we did, I think our tester was telling me we did 237 today, so that's, and that's great considering it poured down rain. So we've had some really good turnout out there at UNCW.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right. Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Ms. Turner, again, for, and the partnership with the Health Department, we truly appreciate it.
And I, and it was remiss of me not to mention that my school health supervisors meet with Julie and Kristen Jackson every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. They are having a Zoom call to talk about what's going on. So we appreciate the back-and-forth, two-way communications, and thank you for your support.
Thank you so much. Yes, Ms. Justice?
Is it, yeah, is, is the Health Department now going to leave this part of the presentation? So there won't be any other opportunities to ask some questions, so should I be asking her questions now about different things related to COVID?
I believe, yeah, you guys are taking off right after this. Yeah, this is, this is the end of the presentation, Ms. Justice, so if you've got questions, this would be the time to ask.
Okay, yes, I do. Would you say it's, I've been watching the numbers, I think a lot of us are, and I, I do see that they're not going, they're going up slowly, but they're still going up on a regular basis. And also, it looks like, and I might be mistaken, but it looks like we had something like six deaths within the last week. Is this true?
Yes, ma'am. We, yes, we did. The way, we, we get deaths from either facilities reporting to us, getting information from the hospital, or we have a staff member that goes through vital records every day to see if it's come through on a death certificate and we hadn't been notified, and we've had that happen. So we have had, we have a total, have had a total of 46 deaths in New Hanover County residents, and 36 of those residents were in the 65 and older age range, eight were in the 54, or 50 to 64, and two were in the 29 to 40, 49 age range, 25 to 49 age range.
But literally though, in the last week, seven, six deaths have been reported, which is an increase.
Yes, ma'am, six deaths have been reported, but the way we get the information doesn't necessarily mean that those people, all those people died in the last few days. Some of them may have died more than a week ago, we just were able to find that on a death certificate.
And the numbers are like yesterday, there are 72 new cases were reported, so the numbers are not going down.
And I, and I, and thank you so much for bringing that up. I do want to point out, we don't, we don't have staff who are working on Sunday, we have staff working Monday through Saturday, so on Sunday, we don't have staff coming in pulling results off. So when you see those Monday numbers, they are actually reflective of Sunday and Monday together. So Monday numbers do appear to be higher each week because they encompass two days. But thank you for asking that, so I can explain it.
So Ms. Turner, is that, now that's not just Wilmington, New Hanover County?
Yes, sir, the numbers we have on our website is just New Hanover County.
Okay, so we've had six or seven deaths in New Hanover County?
Of residents? Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you have a question, Mr. Ivan Bark, or are you just?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Before we finish this, can I ask Dr. Faust some questions? Is this the end of this presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Dr. Faust, a couple of questions. First, I'll preface this by saying this, this is my last board meeting, so this will be the last time you have a board member ask you about kids going back to school, probably for a while, but, but I'll go ahead and do it one last time. Have, have we taken any steps towards moving towards Plan A, now that we're a month into having children back in our schools?
So in our, our presentation, what we have spoken about is that if we can get our county at 5% or less, then we can start to look at measures of going to a different plan, and it would have to be for two consistent weeks. We're not there yet, our numbers are too high.
But, but that, that's not what I asked. I mean, doesn't it make sense to go ahead and start the planning for Plan A, and then if we meet the metrics that, that you've made up, once we meet those metrics, then we have the plan in place. I'm not sure why, why we would not start planning for Plan A, under the assumption that hopefully, we're going to get there someday.
Well, the problem is, we can't master Plan B. We're really struggling in, in Plan B, and Plan A simply, I mean, I'll be honest with you, that would be an easier plan to do. It's not that we don't want to do Plan A. I think everyone, I don't know everyone, but we know how to do Plan A, we know how to do Plan C. Plan B is what's giving us a hard time, so what would it look like? We are working behind the scenes and we'll have something for individuals later about a, a plan that could possibly work, but right now, the numbers are, are too high, and none of our health officials are endorsing our Plan A.
So, and, and I guess, and I'm sure you're talking to all the counties, and again, I'll, I'll bring them up because they're going back to school, but is our school system talk, I know the, you've said that New Hanover County has a lot more people, a lot more bus routes, and that's one of the main hindrances, the differences between Pender County and Brunswick County. Are you talking to Pender County and Brunswick County about how they're doing it? Because ultimately, when you get a kid in the classroom, there's no difference of a kid being in a classroom in Pender County, in Brunswick County, or in New Hanover County, because ultimately, the, the class ratios are about the same. Are you, have you spoken to those counties about what they're doing and sharing information in anticipation of going to a plan A?
So yes, and I'll be honest with you, a lot of speaking, not only just speaking with those two, but speaking throughout the, the state, and a lot of people are ignoring some of the requirements in order to make it work. So for instance, there are some districts who are allowing kids to play on the playground, and they're not cleaning them after each. So yes, they are putting them back in, but in order to do it effectively, people aren't following the guidelines as prescribed. We are just holding it to, and honestly, just being straightforward, we're holding it to a T, and so when we're holding it to a T, then the person who is holding it, then we look like we're the bad guys because everyone around us is able to do it. But if you were able, if you went through that guideline packet and did it as it is prescribed, they wouldn't be able to do it.
Well, the guideline packet, I think, they don't necessarily have requirements, they have strong recommendations, correct? They do have some requirements.
Well, see, for instance, and they're like, keeping kids six feet apart, some like, well, mm, if we can, but if we can't, it's, those are the things, so those are behind the scenes, but we have to, we're saying, okay, we want to make sure that this is happening. And that's not the case.
But, and I understand that, but that six-feet requirement is a strong recommendation, correct? Not a requirement?
Well, I don't want to be the one to tell a parent that their child is, we have to do a cluster, we're closing down because we're not honoring the six feet. That's where I, I mean.
I understand that, but, no, I understand what you're saying, Dr. Faust, but I don't want, I, I don't want there to be misinformation that there's an actual requirement, it's a strong recommendation, which we're following those strong recommendations.
Well, there's a strong recommendation to wear the mask, a strong recommendation to wash your hands, all of these are strong recommendations, we just can't, people just aren't doing it.
So the, the problem, I think that, I mean, a majority of, there is no doubt, a majority of our families want our kids, their kids back to school. I, I don't think that, I don't think there's an argument against that. But what my question would be, is there a realistic timeline that we can give them other than saying, well, not right now, but in the future? Because I think, you know, if we can give a finite time of when we may be able to get back, it'll at least allow families the ability to prepare for that. I think that's one of their biggest frustrations, is we just keep saying, no, not yet. Is there anything that you can say to, to help alleviate that?
And I wish, honestly, I wish I were able to give a, a definitive answer to that, but we had our, we had our, the health officials here, and, you know, he even stated that right now, he's not endorsing going back to school. So if we make that decision, we do have to get some type of clearance through the Health Department.
You did not say that we're not endorsing going back to school, we're, our kids are back in school.
No, I'm, you know, I, we're not twisting the words. So what I want to say is those, when we go, we don't have the capacity right now, and I get it, there are parents, I'm a parent, I want my kids back in school, I want all that. There are teachers who, I spoke with the kindergarten teacher, she wants her kids back in school. That's not the, the problem that people want, and I think you and I agree with that, the problem is doing it safely, and we can't do it safely. That's full transparency, we can't do it safely, so I don't know how to do it. I'm more than happy to get a recommendation from the board on how to do it, and we will examine it. And we have spoken with districts around the state, everyone is struggling. I have friends, you know, in other states, you know, I've worked in other states, they're still in Plan B, I mean, Plan C. I have plans on, on the, on the West Coast there. We are, superintendents are struggling with this, and I know that people want what they want, but we can't do it. It's, it's just that simple, we can't do it, and I know people will send us emails and saying that we're doing harm to students, social, emotional, they need to be in the class, but. doing harm to students, social, emotional, they need to be in the class. But how do you tell a parent, or tell a parent that, you know, your child is now clustered, now they are on a respirator? Because you wanted them, not you specifically, board members, but you wanted them in school. So if we can't do it safely, I can't make a recommendation. But if that's the board's pleasure to put the students back in school in January, by all means, we will do our best to put them back in the, in the school.
I think, actually, this is a good point to move into our next item on the agenda, Mr. Wartman. The ABC Collaborative, we've got Dr. Michael Smith is, is on hold. He's an associate professor of pediatrics. And the ABC Science Collective, that's part of what they're doing, is helping to collect research to get it back into school safely. So can we go ahead and move forward into that to get that presentation?
Sure.
Is that good? Okay. And I'm actually.
Yeah, I'm just, sorry, could y'all hear me?
Yes. Hello, Dr. Smith, thank you. And I'm actually going to pass this to, to Ms. Estep. She, this is her item for the agenda this evening.
Thank you. And I'm actually just going to pass it back to Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith is an associate professor of pediatrics at Duke University School of Medicine. He is also the medical director of the Pediatric Microbial Stewardship Program, and he is part of, as Chair Adams mentioned, the ABC Science Collaborative, which was formed in response to the pandemic. And to Mr. Wartman's point, it really was formed with the understanding that there is an urgent public health need to get children back in school. So you would, you're, we're starting there. So, Dr. Smith, welcome. Thank you for hanging on through what has been a rather lengthy evening, and I will turn it over to you.
Okay, great. So can, I don't know if y'all can see my slides yet. I don't know if that, that PowerPoint's going to come up, but I, but I would say, the only other piece of information to know about me is that I'm, I'm a parent of two kids myself. So I have a younger child who's in preschool, who'd actually been, been in in-person preschool since July. So I understand parental anxiety about sending your children back to school. I also have a, a fifth grader who has been in remote learning, and there's no plans for her going back anytime soon. And I certainly understand the frustration of being in, in Plan C. You can go to the next slide, please. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of our project, and then leave some time for questions. This is our, our generic slide, though. I will point out, you've had some excellent talks by your Department of Public Health and your local, your local physicians. We're not, we're not here to tell people what to do. You guys are the experts in education. And so you'll see here, really, the goal of our project is to present up-to-date, data-driven, evidence-based science to help school districts make decisions. But we can't tell you what to do, we're not going to tell you what to do, but we'll work with you to make the safest decisions that we can for your, for your children. Next slide, please. So, so briefly, what is the ABC Science Collaborative? It's a partnership with Duke, UNC, and now more than 50 school districts across the state. We, we focus really with superintendents. So we have bi-weekly Zoom meetings with, I said, about 55 districts now across the state. Can you go back for a second, please? Dr. Faust has joined a couple of those. And at those meetings, we provide expertise to look at national, state, and local epidemiology. Again, I'm a pediatric infectious disease doctor, I have a master's degree in epidemiology, kind of understand the numbers, but they can be confusing sometimes. We really want to explain those things. What's going on with new therapies? What's going on with the new vaccines that you heard about yesterday? What's the best evidence about things like face covering, indoor versus outdoor instruction, and differential transmission in, in age groups? So those meetings are every other week. We've also engaged with school staff, not only teachers, but including cafeteria workers and bus drivers, and in some districts, talked to families in, in kind of public forums. So again, our goal is to provide complicated data in a format, there's my three-year-old, in a, in a, in a manner that's clear and direct. We have webinars. Those are available to the public. I'll show you on our website in a second. We have newsletters that go out every week, and I mentioned the public-facing website, where you can see our webinar videos and slide sets. You go to the next slide, please. This is our website. I'm sure, it's just as simple as the abcsciencecollaborative.org, and you can see our three project aims, the learning and education, and all of this is, is free and available to the public. We can also enter a formal agreement with your district to kind of help explain some of the science. Again, we're not going to replace the Department of Public Health, but using data from your schools, we can help inform decision-making about what is the safest option for your district. And then finally, we do engage in research. Nothing, nothing crazy, no crazy experiments or anything like that. We're talking about research in its purest sense, which is, what, what can you all do in New Hanover, and how does that compare to other districts across the state? What's, what works well when you go back to school? What doesn't work well? And we can share that across the state, and we're just starting to expand our partnership across, across the country as well. So what can we do to learn what works well and doesn't work well in getting kids back to school safely? And just on the top of this slide, you can see, on the top bar, kind of the right, above Dr. Zimmerman's, Zimmerman's head there, you can see the link for webinars. If you, if you can't make the webinars in person, you can see the recordings and the slides from there. Next slide, please. So, so this is just an example of one of our early webinars that talked about why wearing a mask. I think, I think you've heard a lot about this already, and Dr. Brown mentioned about an hour ago that, that they're important. The next slide. But we talked about that, and we usually have an example, sorry, you can go to the next slide, please. Yep, this is perfect. An example that makes things really easy. Sorry, can you go back? Yeah, there you go, perfect. That makes things really easy to understand, kind of infographics. This is from the CDC. And if you hadn't heard this, there was an, in St. Louis, just outside St. Louis in Missouri, there were two hairstylists over the summer who had COVID. They wore masks, and their clients wore masks, and they were obviously getting their hair done for more than 15 minutes, and there's not a single case. So we know that masks work. Next slide, please. And, and, you know, how's this relevant to schools? Well, we know that masking can work in schools as well. Just in the past month, there were two articles that came out. The first one, you can see on the left, was published in the New York Times about a couple of weeks ago. That was focusing on some work done at the University of Pennsylvania, basically pointing out that school, schoolchildren seem unlikely to fuel coronavirus surges. And on the right, that was slightly older, from the first week of October, published in the Atlantic, based on some research that Dr. Emily Oster, who's an economist at Brown University, who's been tracking and working with school districts as well, concluded that schools are not super-spreaders, and that a lot of the fears of opening schools appear to be overblown. Next slide, please. So these are some of the districts. We're now about 25 districts across the state who have entered a formal kind of working relationship with us. New Hanover has not yet done that, but we wanted to share this with, with the group and see what you all think. Whether you agree or desire to work with us formally, all those resources I mentioned are publicly available. We have an FAQ sheet that has questions for superintendents, as well as teachers and parents about COVID, and how we think school can be opened up safely. And again, moving forward, if we do work together, we can help Dr. Faust and work with the Department of Public Health there locally, to help you all make safe decisions and explain any science as it comes out. So with that, you know, the next slide, I'll stop. I believe, I know it's been a late evening, I have some time for some questions now, but also, you have my email there if you want to reach out to me directly. So I'll stop and take some questions.
I'll start by, by saying thank you. I really appreciate, appreciate the presentation. Do you have, could you just briefly explain what the, what the MOU would, would look like, and do we need, would that be an action item for tonight, or how, how would, what would next steps look like?
Yeah, so, so, so again, I, I don't want to dabble in, in Board of Education politics. Typically, it's, it's gone through the superintendent's office. And obviously, though, we want to make sure that we have the support of Board of Education before we do that. So, and I'm not a lawyer either, but basically, it would, it would, it would say that we have the ability to enter a formal relationship with the school district, just to kind of protect both parties, that, you know, if you disclose information about outbreaks or clusters in the district with us, you know, we would not run to the newspaper and tell people that. And kind of same things, that decisions that we have, primarily with superintendents, you know, would, would be, would be kept private or shared with the board. And again, just that, that, all this is going to be done in, in full, in full agreement. And just there's some, it offers some legal protection for both parties involved. And then there, if, in addition to that, the district agrees to participate in some of the research missions that I mentioned, that would be a separate data use agreement. So the MOU has nothing to do with kind of sharing data about your students. That's a whole separate entity. Does that help?
Yes, thank you. I don't know how other board members feel, but, Dr. Faust, I would certainly like to look at exploring this further, maybe for the interim, for the December meeting, because I think there's a lot of value here. Ms. Estep, thanks for playing to the whistle.
Well, I will say that I've been, I, I knew about the collaborative when they just were working with the, the large school districts, Wake and Charlotte Meck, and was hoping they would expand it out. And then I, I served with Dr. Catherine Edmonds from the Elizabeth City School District. She's a superintendent, and she told me about her experience in her district, and she speaks very, very highly of, of the support that they provide. And, and as Dr. Smith said, they do not supplant what public health does. They, they support it. They talk about the latest mitigation measures, and, and it's really about sharing information across those, those districts, what, what is working. And, and it's, it's really about support, so.
I'm, this will be my last meeting, probably, but I've done a little research with this, these people. I don't think it's anything you need to think about. It's something you need to jump on. They can help our health department out. They've got so much information. I mean, I can't even believe we're even talking to them. I mean, having the opportunity. So I would suggest, not that I'm as smart as everybody else, but I would suggest that you grab ahold of this crowd and jump on them just as hard as you can. And that's all.
This, this is a no cost to the district, correct?
Correct. Yeah, this is, you know, yeah. The, the, I mean, in full transparency, right, this is, this is funded, our program is funded by the NIH, and that's why we have some of the research aims in there. But, but I, I'm here because I really want to get kids back in school in a safe way. And that, that's, that's our priority. But yeah, what, you know, what we would ask was, you know, it would be, it would be helpful to us, and we think it would help you, as well as, as children across the country, if we can enter some of, you know, if you could help us with some of our research aims. But that's really the only cost, and, and that's not really a fin, that's not a financial cost. But yes, correct, there's no, there's no, there's no charge.
Yeah, this is like the pot of gold, guys. Jump on it.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Dr. Smith?
Okay. Thank you all for your time and for doing everything you do on behalf of our kids. Thank you.
We appreciate, thank you very much for being here tonight. Thank you for waiting so long.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
All right. Moving right along. Next item on the agenda is the virtual school presentation, Dr. Smith, the other Dr. Smith.
Anyone else having issues? Nope. There we go. We take a few minute break? Do you want to, while we figure that out?
It's, it's taking a minute.
Okay. Oh, wait, let's see. Hold on. If we say that, that may put it up here. That's how it works. Got excited for a break. Or not.
And it's one of my shorter presentations.
There we go.
All right. Make sure my controls work. Quickly. If we can get it. Point it that way?
Yeah, at the table.
Oh.
There you go.
All right, yay, okay. So don't point at the screen for which you want to look, all right? So, good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board, Dr. Faust, those in the audience, as well as those watching us this evening. New Hanover County Schools, just as all other districts across the state, is required to provide to our students a full online learning option. What I'd like to do tonight is to share with you information about the three primary models that we find across the state, in which districts are utilizing to provide those online learning options to our students. The first model is one that allows students to remain enrolled at their home school. Therefore, students are taught primarily by teachers that are teachers at their home school. The second model is one in which students are enrolled in a separate school. So those teachers most often associated with that school are teachers who are working remotely, who may be representative of teachers across the district. And then the third model is one in which students remain fully remote at their home school, but it's a model that's not very structured. And in my research, and looking across the state at different models, where I found this model most often was in districts that were in Plan C, and they had not transitioned to Plan B. So again, there are those three models. The one where students remain enrolled at their home school, the one where they enroll in a separate school, and the one we find most often for districts that are completely in Plan C, which essentially, they are just providing that full remote learning to students at their school, because all students are involved in remote. What I'd like to talk to you tonight about are primarily, primarily those first two models. So the first of which is the Virtual Academy. Here, I think it's important to, again, just for clarification purposes, to state that students who are enrolled in Virtual Academy are enrolled in their home school. So the Virtual Academy is facilitated through their home school. They're supported by teachers that are teachers at their school. In our district, we do subscribe to a third-party curriculum, which was consistent with many of the districts that I spoke to across the state. Also, I think it's important for us to mention some of the challenges that we found in offering this option. One is that parents have concerns about the lessened opportunities for peer-to-peer interactions. Also, there have been some concerns about the lack of live instruction, so that synchronous instruction, because primarily, this model is a asynchronous model. And then we have had parents express to us some concerns about the quality of the curriculum. So because of that, we took the initiative to survey our families who are being served by Virtual Academy. And we did ask our schools to send this survey out to all of our families. And And what you see on the screen is just a snippet of that data. What was important to us was finding out how families characterize the curriculum. And so when we asked families how they felt about the curriculum, you can see here that 83% of the families surveyed, and there were about 311, or there were 311 respondents, this represented 30 schools across our district, and represented grades K through 12. And so what they shared with us was that 83% found the curriculum challenging, but doable, or average. A smaller percentage, 7.6%, believed that the curriculum was too difficult. And again, we're talking specifically about English Language Arts, or of course, if we're talking K-5, reading curriculum. We also thought it was very important to share with you tonight the responses around mathematics. Here, you'll notice that there's a slight uptick in the families that reported that the math curriculum was too difficult. But again, there were high numbers reported in terms of them finding it challenging, but doable, or either average. And we're working with the vendor to ensure that we have even higher levels of satisfaction with our families. It is really important to us to make sure that our families view this as a high-quality curriculum. Well, I keep looking that way, but going the other direction, I apologize. I'll get it together probably by the last slide. Another important point, because we heard it as a concern, was about the amount of live instruction or synchronous teaching. So we heard from families that it was really important for them to have synchronous or live instruction for their children. So when we surveyed our Virtual Academy families, what we found was that 55% of them actually had a preference for not having more live instruction, which was somewhat surprising to us. And we asked the question in terms of whether they were interested in additional, yet optional, synchronous instruction. But we did also have a strong showing for those families, where 44% said that they did want that. So we are actually looking at now, at opportunities, how we can accommodate both those groups. Because as I said to you, it's very important that we are responsive in meeting the needs of our families. And just to give you a brief snapshot of those families that are being served, it's about 3% of our elementary school population, about 217 students in our middle school, and you can see that we're serving about 13% of our high school population with the Virtual Academy. So now I'd like to share with you just a few, a little bit of information in terms of the virtual school. Again, as I said to you before, this is one of the primary models that we're seeing across the state. In a county adjacent to us, very comparable in our size, they have about 5,000 students that they're serving in their Virtual Academy. And then in another district, a little bit to the north of us, trying to think my, yeah, to the north of us, they have about 55 students, 55,000 students in their district, and they're serving about 14,000 students with remote learning and Virtual Academy. They had so much interest in the remote learning and the virtual, and actually their virtual school, they're calling it Virtual Academy, that they weren't able to accommodate all their students within their virtual school. So we understand that there is a lot of interest in our families around maintaining this online option. So we, again, want to make sure that it's quality. So here, for the purposes of this discussion, we're talking about the virtual school being the option where students are enrolled in a separate school. So students are unenrolled from their home school and enrolled in a, in a separate school, and we know that that in and of itself could have some unintended consequences on our existing schools, primarily because the dollars will follow the students. So where the ADM goes, so does the funding for those students. So there would be some unintended consequences there. Additionally, in the research that I did across the state, what we found most often is that these schools also are utilizing a third-party vendor software, and it's either to supplement or as the primary software. We found examples where they were offering both synchronous and asynchronous instruction, and where they were offering synchronous instruction, that live instruction, the third-party vendor software just simply supplemented, and where they were offering the on-demand instruction or the asynchronous instruction, that curriculum was more or less the primary. But again, teachers do have the flexibility of making changes and augmenting that curriculum, just as they do with our Virtual Academy here in New Hanover. But again, those challenges, those unintended consequences for those schools, and then also a consideration would be, or a challenge would be anticipating those additional costs. Right now, there's not a mechanism that would allow for the salary of the principal to be paid, and we're not sure if that's going to be available to us for the next school year. So that would be a cost that the district would have to absorb. And then also any administrative staff, so office staff, clerical staff, that would be an additional cost for the district as well. So if the district wanted to move forward in consideration for an application for a virtual school, I think it would be very important for us to consider carefully our timeline. Based on my research, I think the very earliest that we could move forward with opening a school would be in the 2021, 2020 school year. I do not believe it would be feasible for us to try to consider that for this school year. And then again, the impact to our existing schools. So if we were to draw down ADM, a school of, say, for instance, 600, and we had 200 students move out of that school and move toward the Virtual Academy, we would be pulling those resources from that existing schools, existing school. And we don't really know what that impact would look like until we started moving those resources out. And then I do believe there's also a question of sustainability. Would this be a decision that would serve us in the short term, and would it be something that we could sustain in the long term? And then again, impact on Title I status. If we were to move forward with this and had large numbers of students who were exiting a school that had been designated at Title I, would it impact that Title I status for that school? Yes. Or if we had large groups of numbers, large numbers of students moving out of a school that maybe weren't qualifying for free and reduced lunch, we might end up with a school that was now identified as Title I. And when that happens, we have to, again, reallocate those resources. And then finally, location. Even though this is a virtual school, we would still need a landing place for that. And so we would have to give consideration to a physical location for the virtual school, not necessarily for the students, but for an office, and for administrators to, I guess, call their home. And then finally, if the district was to make the decision not to move forward with a virtual school application at this time or in the near future, what we would do, as we're working on right now as the district, continue to enhance the offerings within the Virtual Academy. We're working right now on additional professional development for our teachers. We have planned for this month town hall meetings for our families with the vendor, so that they can better understand that curriculum and express any concerns that they have. And then we're also, as I said before, looking at ways to offer that not only on-demand instruction that gives the flexibility that our families want, but also the synchronous instruction, so that live instruction, which seems to be a preference for many of our families who are, who have chosen to remain in remote learning. So I'm glad to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have one regarding the vendor. Are you aware, as a district aware of any attempts by, I mean, ingenuity grades on an algorithm, at least what I've seen as apparent. It seems pretty easy for students to game this. And I've heard reports of that. Have you heard of anything like that, where they can just add the keywords down at the bottom, add four sentences that really aren't connected, and then just throw a bunch of word salad down there about, you know, the pyramids, King Tut, if the topic is Egypt or something to that effect?
So what I would say to that is, I think any child who's savvy enough, who wants to game the system, surely could do something like that. But what's important is the teacher who's behind the program, and that's why we're looking to provide our teachers with additional professional development, because our teachers can go in and give feedback. So for instance, a unit test is locked until a teacher says a child is ready. So that means that teacher needs to go back and look at all the assessments, read all the responses. If there's a response that's not acceptable, then that needs to be pushed back to the student. What we're looking for is much more interaction between the family and the teacher. And I think that comes with understanding the system better, setting higher expectations, and then being responsive to the feedback that we're, that we're getting from our families. So again, I think anyone could choose to game the system that way. Just like if a child turned in a written homework assignment to a face-to-face teacher, and that teacher chose not to read that assignment, same difference there. And really, I think it falls on the time the teacher spends in terms of providing feedback.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And one of mine has to do with the sustainability that you mentioned in regards to the, the virtual school. I guess I would have that same question with the Virtual Academies. Do schools feel like those are sustainable with staffing, the staffing issues that we have? Would we be able to sustain them in the long term? It seems like our numbers are fairly small and fairly manageable now, so it might be, it might be easy to allow them to dissolve over time. But then, I guess my question would be, are we doing students a disservice who would otherwise benefit from the, from the virtual learning? So I guess, and so my second question then would be the cost of the Virtual Academy versus the cost of the virtual school. And do we have a comparison, and Rosemary Hazel, of what those numbers would look like?
So to go to your first question, I do believe that the Virtual Academies are sustainable. I do believe that we have large numbers of students whose families want them to remain full remote. I think the question becomes, can our teachers continue to address the needs of students who are face-to-face, as well as address the needs of students who are full remote? And I think that's where the challenge is. And I know that at the point, and of course, I don't know when this point comes, but at the point where we move to Plan A, then there really does not seem, seem to be a path forward that allows for teachers to do that. So I think we have to plan in a very forward-thinking way. In terms, for your second question, in terms of the cost for Virtual Academy, there really are not a lot of outs, there are not a lot of costs associated specifically with the school. So the students who are in Virtual Academy at School A are those students who would normally be enrolled. The district has picked up the outside cost of the curriculum, and the district would do that same if it were Virtual Academy or if it were Virtual, a virtual school. The additional cost for the virtual school would be the staffing. So where you have redundancies with the Virtual Academy, you have the same principle for your face-to-face children as you do for your remote children, as you do for your Virtual Academy students. You have the same counselors. You have the same data managers. So you've got those redundancies. If you start a virtual school, all of those are completely separate. So you'd have those initial costs in terms of a location, in terms of any startup, in terms of any salaries that, and of course, the dollars would move with, with the children. But there are those additional costs that you would not be able to take from the, from the existing schools. Because we wouldn't, say, for instance, if we opened up a virtual school and we had 4,000 students in it, even if it caused School A to go from 600 to 400, School B from 400 to 200, we would not eliminate any of those schools. We would still need a principal. We would still need an office staff. We would still need counseling services. And so the costs come from that.
I mean, I guess it would be a good, it would be good to see that on paper, what the admin costs are going to be by forming that school. And I'm assuming you would need that planning year for the principal, you know, like we do when we normally start that school. So you would have to hire that principal now, and, and, you know, to move forward. So I understand that would be a cost. But I guess my question would be, are you serving students in a better way with that separate school environment as opposed to the, the Virtual Academies where they are spread out throughout the district? And, you know, I don't know that we can answer that right now without, without knowing the differences.
What I can share with you, based on the conversations that I've had, and I did talk to several folks across the state, many districts our size, in words like train wreck were used when talking about the virtual school.
School versus academy? So did they start with the academy?
Versus a Virtual Academy. There were a lot of, again, traveling down a well-worn path, for the most part, as opposed to one that's brand-new. There were just a lot of unintended consequences. Again, we would be talking about administrative salaries. If you were principal of a school with 1,000 students, and all of a sudden you're principal of a school with 500, then that impacts the administrative salary. And so that is why a lot of schools found themselves, many of them still in the planning stages. They're, they're still in Plan C, and they're considering what would be the best direction to go in. But for those schools who made that leap, in terms of the virtual school, that they experienced the same challenges that we've experienced with, with Virtual Academy, and then a whole slew of them. Another good example, and I had it up here, about record transference. How do you maintain the records for 5,000 students that you're pulling from 45 different schools all at one time? And it's K-12s, because you don't typically, although there is one district in the state that has a K-2 Virtual, they have a 3.5 Virtual, and then they have, I think it's a 6.12 Virtual. And they actually have three principals associated with that school. But most just go K-12 or pre-K-12. And so they're really large schools, and it, and it becomes very, very complex. Dr. Smith? I'm sorry, Bill.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I just had a-
I've got, I've got something to say. I don't think that we ever need to weigh what something costs versus teaching our students. That's something that the, the people that give us our money should decide. The, the teachers that I have talked to that are trying to do remote and teach kids in person are going nuts, and I don't know that we can sustain it. We've got to make some moves. We've got to do some things different than we're doing right now. The promising people that they could keep their same teacher, I don't think that was a good idea. It probably was at the time. But we've, we've got to make some changes shortly. So I'll help you any way I can, but we need to make some changes.
There's a big difference between changes, though, in virtual schools. I mean, that's a huge leap. I was gonna say, I don't, I'm struggling, and I know this isn't a recommendation, I'm just kind of struggling to see where the benefits of the virtual- I'm, I'm just kind of struggling to see where the benefits of the virtual school far outweigh what we're doing with the Virtual Academy and then adding on those enhancements. It's, it's a cool idea. I, I'm just really struggling with it. I don't, I see a lot of potential train wrecks. So I appreciate the perspective that you offered from the, the other districts. I have some enormous concerns about moving forward.
Well, and that was the benefit of doing the research. Because again, when we began this journey, we did not have that research. We were at the same starting place as other districts. Other districts have gone forward from us, and we've learned from them. And there are a lot of challenges with moving forward with the, with the virtual school.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Right now to address, and I just don't think this is a feasible attempt at this time.
And I would like to apologize to you in having jumped in with what Bill said, but we do need to, teachers' needs definitely need to be addressed as far as them trying to do these dual roles. But on the other hand, a virtual school is literally creating a whole school, which Lisa pointed out. There's an awful lot behind that, there's a lot of money involved with that. And I know from my history in education that these virtual schools really aren't very effective, unfortunately. If you want to look at the charter schools, most of the charter schools that have failed are these virtual schools. So we need to, to me, it seems like looking at the Virtual Academy we have and doing enhancements and helping the teachers and the students would probably be the most realistic way to go forward.
Judy, I, I didn't think anything about what you said, but I'm just, I'm just, you know, and I know, I know all of y'all talk to teachers also. But, you know, I'm talking to teachers that are thinking about, I can retire in six months? Or I can go to another district, or I can do this, or I can do that? And we've got good teachers, I don't want to lose them. And I think, I think we're wearing, I, I think we're wearing them out. They're crying at the school.
I know that. I, I, I feel for them. What I'm saying is, the virtual school is probably not the answer, there's other answers. And we can't address what you just said. I'm, I'm with you, Bill. I totally agree. We both, we're all getting, we're all getting conversations going on. And we do care about the teacher's situation. We need to alleviate these challenges. That's what we should be looking at within what we have, not going out and creating something that won't even be able to start until two thousand and twenty, two thousand twenty-one. By then, hopefully, COVID will be a, a whole different picture. It'll be a lot less of a, you know, demand for this kind of situation.
I wouldn't be a teacher under normal circumstances. I couldn't do it, but I, I know, and I know a lot of these teachers. They're friends of my wife, and I've gone to the schools and talked to them. And, and they're not just whining, there are some that are. But, you know, I mean, most of them, I mean, they're like, just, I, I can't take, I can't take, we, we can't make them do more than they can do.
And we can't. I agree with you. Bill, I agree with that, and we need to work with what we've got now to help them. We can't even do anything until twenty, uh, next year, next school year, if we do adopt a virtual school, so.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, do we have any other questions for Dr. Smith? We've got a full agenda to get to, and this is definitely a, a very, thank you for this information. But are there any specific questions around virtual school?
The only other question is, I'm sorry, as part of your research, we did also do, you did also do a teacher survey, did you not?
We did, and I didn't include that information, but we had one hundred and forty-five responses from there. We did break down that data by high school, elementary teachers. High school teachers, we had a hundred and six responses, elementary, twelve responses, and middle school, twenty-six responses. And what we talked about there was just really about how they're taking advantage in modifying the curriculum, and that's going to help drive our conversation around additional teacher training. Yes. Yes, teacher voice is very important. Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna suggest that we take a quick five-minute break as we move into our next item, which is the first quarter student failure data. I know this is a very important item that our community is very interested in. So let's take a quick break for those of us that are here at the BOE Center, and we will return at eight forty-three. Thank you.